If you want to come with me.
And so, I just wanted to first.
Okay, so I have your site plan.
Mm-hmm.
Hey. Is there anything to do before? In particular, you want to go over?
We could probably go right to the first 24 plan. There's one sheet that will show the whole project.
Okay, 22 or just like the time? Okay. Also, there's a power plant. And basically, this is the distance of the whole project. So how about I just do this and I'll stop on this side?
Sure.
Let me know what you need. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming in. We are waiting for another commissioner so we can have a quorum. So I appreciate your patience. We'll start shortly. Thank you.
We have not received a site plan. Or do you have the clicker?
Perfect.
Okay. Chair, staff is ready to go when you are.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening. We are going to be opening up the Pontiac Planning Commission meeting for June 7th. And I'm going to open the meeting. And I would like to call to order and ask for a roll call, please.
All right. McGinnis?
Present.
Shepherd?
Present.
Parlov?
Present.
Sinclair?
Present.
Thank you. And this evening, we have, to my far left, our planning manager, Mr. Mark Yandrick. To his right is Mr. Mike McGinnis. To my left is Tim Shepherd. Sue Sinclair is here on my right. I am Mona Parlov, chairperson of the Planning Commission. And we have Corey Christiansen here at the microphone this evening. Are there any official communications, Corey?
Before we get to that, we do have three Planning Commission members that have, ahead of time, said that they would be out of town.
Okay.
This week, Commissioners Duval, Northcross, and Henley, if they could be excused from the meeting.
I would like to excuse those three commissioners from this meeting.
So moved, if required.
All right.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you. All right. Corey, are you our man of the evening?
So, before we get to that, just under official communications, I do want to let the audience at home and the people here know, there were actually three items that were advertised for public hearing, either by Oakland Press or by Oakland Press in a mailing. And I wanted to share that they are not on the agenda tonight. Number one is a zoning map amendment for 144 East Pike Street, which is located very near City Hall. The applicant has requested an additional month before that gets on the agenda. Number, item 3B, is the right-of-way vacation for Hovey Lane. The city is requesting more information of the applicant for this review. This is expected, again, to come forward in July, but we need to ensure that that meets some criteria before it goes forward to Planning Commission. The last one at 3C is an alley vacation for 94 Dwight. City staff was under the impression that this needed to be vacated. The maps that we were provided had this vacation, but it's unfortunate, it's fortunately unnecessary because it's already been vacated. So, there's really no need for an application for this development, so.
Okay, very good. So I can incorporate that into the approval of the agenda after we make the modifications?
So, these are not, these items are not on the agenda, so you don't need to address them. But I did want to let them know, public hearing notices were sent out and that they're just not on the agenda this evening.
Okay, thank you for that. So, regarding the amendments to the agenda, I would like to add to, first of all, actually, I would like to move item 8A, SPR 22023, to the first item before the public hearing? Is that what you wanted to do, Mr. Yandrick?
Correct. Just for the sake of time for the applicant, this item should only take a couple minutes. And to have that before the public hearing may be appropriate.
All right, so I will move that before public hearing. And then, when we open up our public hearings, we're going to do Application 7A, the ZMA 23-005, the zoning map amendment for 1461 Baldwin. And then, we will go to the item of SPR 23005, which is the preliminary site plan for that same property. After that, we will still hear the ZMA 23004, the Red Chickweed LLC applicant. And then, we'll go to Application SEP 23-006. That would be 25258 Woodward Avenue. That public hearing we will do, and when we have finished that, we will bring in item SPR 23010, the site plan review for that same location.
And Chair, if I may, I just wanted to describe, what we typically ask at a staff level, staff had asked this of our Chair, is that when there are multiple applications that are related to each other, and tonight, we have a rezoning and a site plan, and we also have a special exception in a site plan, that those be heard back-to-back, just for the continuance familiarity of that project, so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Right, so I'd like to make that proposal of the modification to the agenda.
I move the agenda as amended.
Support.
Roll call.
All right. Parlov?
Yes.
Sinclair?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Four-nothing.
For our meeting minutes from May 3rd, does anyone have any modifications? Mr. McGinnis?
None.
Mr. Shepherd?
No changes.
Ms. Sinclair?
Uh, no.
Nor do I. So I would like to have a motion to approve the minutes as-is.
Yeah.
Anyone?
Motion to approve the minutes as-is?
Support.
Support.
Roll call.
All right. McGinnis?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Parlov?
Yes.
Sinclair?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, now we will go to our applicant.
Well, I move to approve the May 10th minutes, as-is.
Oh, thank you for that. Any support?
Support.
The motion, actually, the previous motion was for both minutes, so.
Okay.
So.
Do you incorporate May 10 and?
And, yep.
Thank you.
So, I retract my motion.
Okay, so now, we are going to ask SPR 22-023, Augur Klein Aler Architects Incorporated, to share with us their information about their site plan approval extension for 1200 North Telegraph regarding the, uh, what do we have there?
The outdoor dog kennel expansion at 1200 North Telegraph Road for the Oakland County Animal Shelter Pet Adoption Building 42.
Thank you. Do you want to discuss first? Do we need our applicant to come to the microphone?
Yep. Corey's going to have, Corey Christiansen's going to have a brief setup for this, and then, the applicant will be speaking to Planning Commission on this request.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, Corey.
All right, so this is a fairly simple request. This is a one-year extension. The zoning ordinance allows the Planning Commission the authority to grant up to two years of an extension from an approval. You can only do it one year at a time, though. So if they wanted to extend again, they would have to come back for their second year. In this case, this is an applicant who is, who requested and was issued a zoning permit for 19 dog runs. It's an expansion to the dog kennel at 1200 North Telegraph Road. Their approval was issued on July 8th, 2022, and they are not, have not commenced construction, and the applicant will explain the reasons why. But essentially, they're asking for one year of an extension. So this is the location. It's part of the county complex to the north, kind of by Telegraph Road. And then, this is from the site plans that were provided. So this approval was done administratively by staff last summer. It did not come before the Planning Commission. But these are the plans that were provided, and this shows the 19 dog runs. And then, here is the site plan. It shows, there's no actual extension of the physical building. These are all just outdoor dog runs. They'll be composed of six-foot chain-link fence. There will be 19. And the total area of the change is roughly 100 feet by 190 feet. So overall, staff recommends the approval of the one-year extension. Sorry, this is the wrong recommendation. So staff recommends approval. And if you want to make a motion to approve, you would simply make one motion to approve the one-year extension at 1200 North Telegraph Road.
Very good, thank you. Can our applicant please come to the podium and share anything more that you would like about your extension request?
And if you could hit the right button to turn the microphone on, that would be great. It'll come on red. The right button.
Thank you. You're live, very good.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, please state your name and address for the record.
Dwayne Mento, Augur Klein Aler Architects, 303 East Third Street, Rochester, Michigan. Good evening, everybody. Appreciate you listening to me. We're the original architects for the project for the Oakland County Animal Shelter in 2018 when it opened. Currently, they're running out of capacity. They have 155 dogs, 145 places, but they're trying to build an outdoor area for them to have a little more room to get outside and experience what it's like not to be in a cage all the time. The project was, has been going on for a year or so. Unfortunately, the original budget, they thought, was way below what now construction costs are, so they had to find ways to produce funding for this. They finally found out they can afford it, and we would like to go ahead with the project.
Very good, and the dogs think you too. Okay. I don't know if anyone has any questions. Mr. McGinnis?
Rather straightforward. I'm prepared to make a motion.
Sounds great. Tim?
No question.
Sue?
No questions.
Nor do I. Okay, motion, please.
I move to approve the one-year site plan approval extension for the site plan at 1200 North Telegraph Road for the outdoor dog kennel expansion for the Oakland County Animal Shelter Pet Adoption Building 42.
Wonderful. Support?
Support.
Okay, roll call.
All right, Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes, to approve.
Commissioner McGinnis? Yes, to approve. Commissioner Sinclair?
Yes.
And Commissioner Parlov?
Yes, to approve. Congratulations, you got your extension. Aw, thank you, you as well. Okay, now, we are going to go to our public hearings that we have for the evening. The first one will be Application ZMA 23-005. This is the zoning map amendment for 1461 Baldwin Avenue. The request is to go from C1 to C3 zoning.
All right, Mark is occupied, so I will do my best to present in his place.
You will do just great.
All right. So this is Application SPR 23-005. It's a rezoning application at 1461 Baldwin Avenue. The request is to go from C1, local business, to C3 corridor commercial. Did you want to finish?
I'd be happy to.
Okay.
So, this is just showing the site. There, what's unique about this is there are three parcels for this site that are separated by that alley that is there. So if you're looking at this, Baldwin is on the right side of the screen, and really, it's an alleyway for the properties on the backside of Baldwin. This is the zoning map showing the area. The, at the corner there, the properties along Baldwin are C3. The properties along East Walden are, or West Walden, in this case, are C1, which are local business, which are a little bit more intense uses. And this highlights, can I have the? This highlights the individual property. So really, we're just looking at this small section right here that is zone C1. Now, one of the rules for the medical marijuana ordinance in the East Walden overlay district is it has to be zoned, certain zoning districts, including C3. And as we were evaluating through this process, we realized that this, this site acted as one site, and this essential area needs to be rezoned as C3. So really, that's what's being evaluated this evening. There is a site plan that will be heard later this evening, but this application is solely for this rezoning. And actually, just to note, you have the industrial land to the south on the other side of the street. So you have residential to the north side of this property. You have industrial to the south on the other side of Walden. I did want to just show some photos. This is from the alley, looking at the existing conditions. You have a dumpster there. You have a dumpster enclosure there, and some trees. And the residential properties are on the opposite side of this. So their proposal with this rezoning is to repurpose that existing building and improve the facade for that provisioning center. And the applicant is seeking the necessary approvals. They have already received a conditional approval from the city clerk's office, and the site plan approval is their next step before going to the state. In identifying a rezoning, I do have some analysis of the differences between C1 and C3. C3 is generally more permissible than C1, and C1 is primarily for small retail operations. C3 allows for a broader range of commercial uses. It also permits some industrial uses by special exception, such as automobile service, light manufacturing, mini warehousing, and non-toxic hazardous materials. But the important thing on this slide in staff's analysis is that this parcel is not large enough as a standalone due to the alley. So, you know, any site approval that would be done, would be done, it's, it still would be part of the main site along C3. So it really is going to be limiting some of the light manufacturing uses, because this is not a large site to begin with. If it were a larger parcel, that may allow some more intensive uses. So, and then, the dimensional requirements, there are some small differences between the two, having to do with setbacks. The, both are restricted to heights of 35 feet. Staff does not have too much concern about these changes in dimensioning, just because this is intended to be a parking lot. There are some non-conformities on the lot, but those are allowed to remain, and I will discuss that at the site plan. So with that, staff's recommendation is that it meets the criteria. Planning Commission and City Council may add considerations to the above criteria if they are applicable to the site. So, staff's recommendation is approval of the requested rezoning from C1 to C3 at 1461 Baldwin Avenue, and the parcel ID is listed up there for your motion. So with that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have, and the applicants in the audience.
Very good. Thank you for all of that information. Why don't we bring the applicant to the microphone? If you would like to add anything more to the presentation, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Roddy Besleck. I'm with Fenton Land Surveying and Engineering.
Can you turn your mic on? It's the right button in front.
No need to turn it off, everybody. You can leave it on once it's on.
There you go.
Thank you.
Sorry. My name is Roddy Besleck. I'm with Fenton Land Surveying and Engineering. We did the site plans for this and helped the applicant fill out the application for the rezoning. As Mark said, the current parcel that's zone C1 is a parking lot that we use for our building, which is sitting on another piece of property across from the alley, and that one's already zone C3. So in order to kind of combine all the parcels together, I'm assuming they all had to be the same zoning, and that's kind of what we're here for. So we can actually combine all three parcels and have the same zoning for them. And it's going to remain a parking lot. We need a parking lot for our business anyway, so it's not like we're going to add a building or anything onto it either. Like Mark said, it's really small. That's pretty much it.
Very good, thank you. All right, Mr. McGinnis, any questions?
No, none at this time. Look forward to any community feedback if there's any present.
Sounds good.
No questions?
Mr. Shepherd, no. Sue?
No questions.
Okay. I don't have any questions either. So what I'd like to do is I would like to open up the public hearing. If anyone has any questions, please approach the microphone. State your name and address for the record. We are going to have a three-minute limit on comments, and please keep your comments to ones that have not been made before.
If I could, Madam Chair, it looks like there was a phone that has been left on the, is that your phone?
That's not mine.
So somebody's phone is at the podium.
Yeah, better eyes than me.
But I did leave my phone.
Thank you. Okay. No one has any comments they would like to make about this petition? I am, I'm going to close public comment. And I will go back to my fellow commissioners. Anything from you, Mr. McGinnis?
I am really grateful that the, this intersection thoroughfare already looks so much better in terms of what it has historically, so I'm grateful that it is more maintained and clean than it has been for the last 20 years. I, I think that this is pretty straightforward because there's existing C3 zoning immediately adjacent, and this corridor has a great deal, a high concentration of C3, and so I don't have any material concerns about that.
Thank you. Mr. Shepherd?
Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Ms. Sinclair?
No questions.
Nor do I, so I think we are ready for a motion.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I may, real quick.
Please.
Instead of saying, "I make a motion to approve," this is a recommendation to City Council, so please say, "I make a motion to recommend approval or recommend denial."
Okay, thank you. I would like a recommendation, please. Anyone?
You want me to do it? Okay. I make a motion to recommend the requested rezoning from C1 to C3 at 1461 Baldwin Avenue, parcel ID 1408385024.
Support.
Thank you. Roll call.
Sinclair?
Yes, to approve.
Parlov?
Yes, to approve.
Shepherd?
Yes, to approve.
McGinnis?
Yes, to approve.
Very good. Thank you for that. Now, I would like to bring up the item number, SPR 23-005. This is the preliminary site plan for that same property address, 1461 Baldwin Avenue.
Should be open at the bottom. There we go. All right. So this is the preliminary site plan application, SPR 23005. Ironically, both of their applications are 005 tonight. Their address is 1461 Baldwin. Again, this is Leaf Cove Ventures, and it is for a medical marijuana provisioning center. The zoning district is C3, which is the East Walden Medical Marijuana Overlay District. The one thing I would do want to state about the packet, it is, for Planning Commission, is that in the packet over the weekend, we inadvertently put the original application, which was erroneously filed as a adult-use retail center. The applicant, about two months ago, refiled the application as a provisioning center, but that, I do want to state, this is only for a provisioning center. You do have that one-page, it's amendment, it's separate than the packet itself, so.
Thank you.
But this is for a provisioning center. So this is the timeline. You heard this in April 5th at the informational session. Tonight is the case hearing, and then, the final site plan will be a staff approval at a future time. So, this is the location map, as we just discussed, with the three parcels that are here. So let me give some familiarity to this area, to this site. So this is the photo from the intersection, just looking at the existing site. This is really from Baldwin, looking west towards West Walden. This is the parking lot on the western side of the alley. Really, this overview is they're repurposing that existing 4,000-square-foot building and improving the facade for the provisioning center that's on the site. They're really going to be utilizing the parking to the north of the building and the parking lot across the alley, and this functions as one site. So, and they're seeking their site plan approval to satisfy the conditional approval requirements from the city clerk's office. So this is looking at the site itself. There are two access points, one on Baldwin, one on Walden. This, this is a unique situation with this alley transversing the site, but staff does not see any issues with this connecting forward. Their main entryway will be in the front, so most visitors that are in this parking lot over here would be just walking across here to enter into the front of the site. There's an existing dumpster that is at the top here that will be repurposed as part of this. This is the landscape plan, just showing existing and a proposed landscaping. You can see the existing landscaping at the top of the site here, adjacent to the residential properties. As you can tell, they're adding some landscaping. This is really going to enhance the, the street frontage at this intersection as well. So this is the elevation proposed, and they are making some minor modifications of the facade. The elevations are a little different. You can see this on the subsequent slide, but they're, they're working with the blocks, but they're also working with different colors, different patterns, and some architectural features with these entrances that are really going to pop. They also have some lighting sconces that are located throughout the facade, so it's not just windows and doors that are breaking up the mass on this side. I wanted to show a before-and-after photo. Sometimes, this is the pop, you know, really gives you a picture of what they're looking to do, and really shows you what we hope is before-and-after for these improvements. The signage is listed on here. It's not part of your approval this evening, but just helps you understand what they're proposing and where the main entrance is for architectural purposes, so. And I do want to say that, working with the Carlisle Werpen Firm, who's the city's planning consultant, they have really addressed some architectural concerns, and so I would definitely say, from a staff's perspective, we've say from a staff's perspective, we've been very supportive of of their ability to amend these plans to come in conformance with our zoning code. So and some of these highlights, and I'm going to highlight this, is just they've applied for the rezoning, they've made some amendments to the photometric plan, it's listed in the staff report. They have revised the drawing for the front of the building to for non-primary building materials equal to thirty-five percent of the total facade. And then some of the architectural design standards is working with a darker shade of gray on the brick, adding a cornice or decorative feature where the facade meets the roof, and adding those louved awnings over the two additional doors, so. I do want to mention the variance. This was listed in the staff report from the Carlisle Werpen Firm. Their recommendation was the applicant should receive a variance for the northwest property line, where there typically is either a wall and a certain buffer yard, or a without a wall, a larger buffer yard to allow for some screening. Right now, there's not enough room and distance between the parking lot and that curb and the existing fence that's there. And so upon further analysis, city staff has worked with the Kelly Firm, has determined that this is an existing condition. While the fence can be improved, it is a legal nonconformity that can remain from Article six, Chapter five of the city zoning code, having to do with legal nonconformity. So staff's recommendation is that that first condition of the staff report would not be required. And this really was a conversation the applicant asked the city after the staff report was published, and and we feel confident with this moving forward, just because the parking lot would need to be amended, and that's why we have rules of nonconformity, because it's just the financial burden to put it into conformity would be a little a little much, so. So with that, staff's recommendation is approval with only one condition, and that is the rezoning of the western parking lot, case ZMA two-three zero zero five, shall be approved by City Council before the final site plan is approved. And then the motion, the suggested motion is up there as well. So I'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have, and I thank you very much.
Thank you for all that great information. If the applicant wants to come back to the podium, do you want to add anything? No?
Honestly, I think Mark's group would take care of it.
Very good.
Last thing was the fence is kind of on the northern property line.
Okay.
And your plan is to improve it, correct?
We want to improve vinyl fence.
Yep.
Kind of edge instead of that wood. We would get some first touch.
Yep, yep.
But vinyl fence is a moment.
All right. Mr. McGinnis, do you have any questions?
No further questions.
Mr. Shepherd?
I think my one question was going to be the fence, which you just answered, so. I saw there's there's EFS somewhere, there's STUCO somewhere. I didn't quite see it on the plan. Am I missing something? It was in the?
If you could head to the podium.
Yes, please. And then state your name and address again for the record.
I'm trying to go pages on, but I don't know if it's. It must not be much of it, I just can't. It's not. There's nothing. It's it's written, I mean, if you, it might have been something, maybe it was on the original one I saw. That was, that's that's really my only questions. It looks good, so.
Did you look at page, page three?
Could you approach the podium and state your name and address again, please, for the record?
I, it's Roddy Besleck. I'm with Fenton Land Surveying and Engineering.
Thank you.
If you turn to page A three of the architectural plans, up in the top right-hand corner, he's got kind of a list of materials that are going to be on the building.
Maybe that was it, but you're not using any?
As far as I can see, the STUCO was before, but not now.
Okay.
He's got Precast Custom kind of a STUCO molding. Ex nine.
I don't know where it would be, but from the pictures, so I was just curious.
If I can approach, I can kind of show you.
No, that's okay. I I can see if your if your rendering is going to be what we're talking about.
And I I think I can confirm that they have modified some of the enhancements. EFS can sometimes be used as an accent material throughout, and it's barely noticeable when it's not a the body or or base of a building.
I'm not against it, I just wondered where it was.
Yeah.
I don't like a lot of it, obviously, but. That's all I have.
Thank you. Sue, anything?
My question was regarding the fence, too. You want to put a vinyl fence in there, except that?
Could you go back up to the microphone, please? Thank you.
When you look at that picture, I went out there this weekend, except I didn't really explore that back area there.
We're going to redo the dumpster, the fences around the dumpster, and actually create a wall with a fence gate, and then that wood fence is on the backside, we're going to replace it with a vinyl fence, and then along the curb coming back this way.
What's the distance between the curb and the fence?
It's like a half foot off the back of the curb.
I appreciate the intent of putting in a vinyl fence. My only concern is when you plow that parking lot and you put that snow up against that fence, it's going to get destroyed. I mean, if you travel along Square Lake Road between Woodward and Telegraph, you can see, while it's not a, it's more of a rail fence, you can see quite a bit of damage all the time. That's my concern, that it's a vinyl fence. I would rather see something else. Or some composite, something that's a little sturdier than vinyl, because it sits out in the sun, it gets brittle, the minute you push anything up against it, it cracks. Those are my only concerns.
And I would recommend if there's something you you can add a condition if you'd like. I mean, I I think those are some valid points, but that that would help staff at the final site plan approval.
Sounds good. Thank you, Sue. I also had some thoughts about the vinyl product, and I love that reference to the fencing along Square Lake Road, which it's not even up against the road, and it has a lot of breakage in that mile section. So if there's another material besides vinyl that could be used, that would be appreciated. That's all I have to say. So would someone like to make a motion? You want to do the motion?
Here, let me get the motion back up.
Sure. I make a motion to approve SPR twenty-three dash zero zero five with one condition of approval as stated in the staff report.
And the fencing noted?
Ask her.
And the fencing type?
And the fencing type addressed.
As not being vinyl.
As not being vinyl.
All right. Support?
Support.
All right. Roll call, please.
All right. And if there, if you ever want discussion after a motion, you absolutely can, too, so. But if not, roll.
Anybody want to say anything now or forever hold your peace? Mike?
No.
Okay. Roll call.
Absolutely. Harlow?
Yes, to approve.
McGinnis?
Yes, to approve.
Shepherd?
Yes, to approve.
Sinclair?
Yes, to approve.
All right. Motion.
Thank you. Congratulations.
I would recommend contacting city staff. We can get you on the final site plan process whenever you're ready, so.
We can send you a couple of public announcements.
Yep, yep.
Yes, you would like to ask a question?
I would love to.
And what's your question?
I just have a question. Do we, are we, do we bond some of this stuff? Like, how do we know that it comes out? Just following up to see if it comes out the way we put it through. We know in other cities, that's that's not an uncommon thing, so when it's verified at the end, they get their bond.
Let's talk about that under communications at the end of the agenda. Okay.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to move to our next item on public hearing, which is ZMA twenty-three dash zero zero four. This is Red Chickweed LLC. They're looking for a zoning map amendment for thirty-one North Astor Street from R one to R three. It's important.
Yep, and I just broke the thing, so. Corey, can you take this presentation, then I'll move the slides along for you?
Yep.
And I'll, you can give me those.
I'm trying to just point it. I don't know. I can't do it. 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 There we go. All right, thank you. All right, so this is a rezoning case located at thirty-one North Astor. This is for a total of eleven parcels, one major parcel that used to be a school, plus ten additional adjacent parcels. The request is to rezone the property from R one, one-family dwelling, to R three, multiple-family dwelling, to permit the redevelopment of the vacant school into multifamily residential with an option for some commercial. Next slide. So this is the general location. It's to the east of Martin Luther King, south fifty-nine. Is it working? All right, so this is just to show you where all the parcels are located. This is kind of a, the area within the city, and then this is to show you, there's the major large parcel ending in zero one four, and then there's the ten adjacent parcels on the west there along ML King that are fourteen twenty-seven, three oh six, zero zero two through zero ten. All these parcels are currently zoned R one, one-family residential. It's pretty typical for schools to be zoned R one. The R one zoning district does allow some community uses in addition to residential, such as schools or community centers, that kind of thing. This is to give you an idea of the zoning designation nearby. It's surrounded by R one, and then right there at the corner there, there is some C one local business, so all those parcels would be rezoned to R three if approved. This is from the applicant. This is just a very early pre-conceptual drawing, showing what they're proposing for that large tract of land. So you see there the school, and then proposed additional future multifamily residential This is also from the applicant, showing their, this is a very early pre-conceptual drawing, but showing how it meets the kind of objectives of the master plan. It shows the buildings going up to the roadway and all three sides, and then the parking lot in the center of the parcel, just to make it more aesthetically pleasing.
Corey, can you go back to that slide and just orient people which roads which?
Sure. So down at the bottom, that's ML King. To the left, that's actually north, so if that helps. To the left, that's where fifty-nine would be. So then comparing R one to R three, we see that the R three zoning is more permissive. The R one is primarily for single-family homes and some community uses, like I discussed earlier. The R three, which they're proposing to change it to, allows for a broader range of residential uses, including multifamily. It also permits some minor commercial uses by special exception, which means that they couldn't just do it, they would have to come before this board and get permission to do it. But those uses are restaurants, banks, studios, bed and breakfasts, and offices. R three is primarily geared towards mixed use and higher-density residential. Now in terms of what changes would occur to the dimensional requirements in the zoning ordinance, there's different setback requirements depending on your zoning, and so but going from R one to R three, we found that there was really very minor changes to what those dimensional requirements will be. R one is required to be sixty feet wide and at least seventy-two hundred square feet in area. R three is required fifty feet and six thousand, so it's actually becoming more restrictive in that regard. Both are required a twenty-five-foot front yard setback. R one is required a five-foot side yard, and R three is required a fifteen-foot side yard, and both are required a thirty-foot rear yard, and both are restricted to a max height of thirty-five feet. So in order to approve rezonings, there are standards of approval. There's quite a few of them, so I'm going to be going through these relatively quickly. But standard A, we found that the master plan's future land use map classifies the subject property as entrepreneurial, residential, commercial, and green. This classification is intended to allow for a wide range of uses and site configurations so that residents, neighbors, community groups, investors, and other stakeholders might redevelop distressed properties. Standard B, we found that the property is not located within a floodplain or wetland, and the topography of the site is level. Standard C, we found that under the current designation, the primary parcel, the big property, is only permitted to be used as a single-family residence or a school, but if it's going to be redeveloped, it would have to be zoned R three. To redevelop it as multifamily, it's not permitted in R one. Standard D, the R three zoning district permits the same uses as the R one district with the addition of higher-density residential and some low-intensity commercial. Standard E, the city's utilities and services are sufficient to accommodate the proposed use. Standard F, the site was previously used as a public school, and so the roadway is designed to accommodate large numbers of people. Standard G, staff found that the boundaries of the requested rezoning district are sufficient for the development proposed by the applicant. The area of the rezoning fronts the right-of-way on three sides, oops, and to the south at about single-family residences. Standard H, the applicant worked with city staff to determine the appropriate zoning district for this property, and we found that the least change necessary to permit the uses the applicant wants would be R three. Standard I, it would not be appropriate to amend the list of uses permitted in the R one, R one-one-family district to include multifamily and commercial uses. The idea there is you're not supposed to approve a rezoning if it would be easier or more practical to just alter the zoning ordinance to allow the use in that district. It would not make sense to allow multifamily in the R one district. And then spot zoning. The requested rezoning will maintain the residential nature of the property, but allow for multifamily-style developments. And so with that, staff's recommendation is to approve. Again, this would be a recommendation to city council. So an example motion would be, I make a motion to recommend approval of the proposed rezoning from R1, one-family dwelling, to R3, multiple-family dwelling at 31 North Astor, with the conditions as presented by the applicant, if any. And with that, are there any questions for me?
Thank you very much. Mr. McGinnis?
Well, actually, may I add on a couple of things? And thank you, Corey, for that presentation. I just wanted to say that this is, the city has seen definitely schools that have been vacated by the school district. And, you know, it is very challenging for redevelopment. I don't know the exact condition of the Longfellow School that's in question here, but it's in a much better condition than some of the other ones that Planning Commission and City Council have reviewed. And, you know, it can't be used, there's, the demand for a school is not there, and we want to make sure that this is a repurpose. And so, the city is definitely supportive of this use. And the fact that this is a long MLK, which is at Thoroughfare of the city, is helpful. The fact that it is near Pike, which is a neighborhood collector, you know, is important. If this were more interior to a neighborhood, the city may have different thoughts, but there's a lot of support for this. Now, as part of a rezoning process, Planning Commission and City Council cannot require conditions. However, the state of Michigan does allow conditional rezoning if the applicant volunteers conditions. I do want to state, at this point, we've had conversations with the applicant. They're not volunteering any conditions at this time. You know, that's not to say Planning Commission can't have a discussion and ask some questions about that. But I just wanted to share that those discussions have been taking place. So with that, that's my thoughts and words.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. McGinnis?
I'll hold my questions until we hear from nearby residents.
Thank you. Mr. Shepherd?
Same thing.
Ms. Sinclair? Alright, and I don't have any questions either right now. What I'll do first is I will have the applicant approach the podium, please, and state your name and address for the record if you are here.
Can you turn the mic on? The red button on the right, down below.
On the little pedestal in front of you. Thank you.
I didn't see any red. Nicolau Master Mateo, representing Red Chickweed LLC, the owner of the property. The address has been changed to 31 North Astor.
Okay, thank you. Do you have anything you would like to add to the presentation?
Nothing stands out in particular. I mean, you already emphasized too that the sketches for Phase 2, the ground up, are, you know, just preliminary, just an idea to get something on paper. But they do mostly, if not all, match with the requirements of the zoning code.
Okay. Thank you for that. If you'd like to sit down, what I'm going to do is I'm going to open up public comment. And when I do that, I will have anyone who would like to make a comment approach the podium. You'll have, state your name and address for the record. But please be aware, you'll have a three-minute limit for your comments. And if you have any questions for our petitioner, we will write them down. You cannot interact with the petitioner while they sit in the audience and you are at the microphone. Once we close public hearing, we will do our best to answer your questions. And again, once public hearing is closed, there will be no more comments from the audience. So I will open public comment now. Please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Norman Neillam, 45258 Woodward Avenue, Pontiac. And I like that development. I like the fact that what Mark said just a minute ago there, how it's not deeply into the neighborhood, but it's right off of Martin Luther King. And you got, you know, easy access where we're not impeded upon the neighborhood, so. And the development itself is beautiful. I believe it fits that area, and it fits the master plan for the city of Pontiac. So whatever it takes to approve this and make it viable or make it where it will come forth would be appreciated.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
My name is Timothy Peoples, and I live at 659 Riverside Street, Pontiac, Michigan. My question is just this, what exactly is it supposed to be turned into, the school? Was that stated? Maybe I missed it. That was my, that's a question.
That's your only question?
Yeah.
Alright, we will get back with you. Thank you.
And when they say "we will get back with you," they mean as soon as this, the folks have a chance to weigh in?
Hi, good evening. I am Regina Campbell, 511 Bay Street, Pontiac, Michigan. And I think the development is a great idea. We know that there's a housing shortage here in the city of Pontiac. And so, the development is to bring housing in our community. So I think it's a good idea. As I mentioned, it's not, doesn't sit right. There's a number of schools in Detroit that have been turned into housing, lofts and whatever. But at the end of the day, because he's bringing housing to our community, which there's a shortage of, I think it's a good idea.
Great, thank you.
Good evening. Carlton Jones, 1323 Oaklawn Drive, Pontiac, Michigan. I think what Mark was saying, the difficulty that we have in trying to redevelop a school property, that it's commendable that someone takes on that challenge and try to do their best to make something this viable for the community. I think that I would only want to make sure that when we do raise the density of the property, that we make sure we take enough green space to stay in there, to make it viable for whomever lives there. Sometimes, when the density do rise, they have a tendency to rise the density to a level that the green space is not accommodating for the number of people and the types of families you want to try to move in there. But I think just taking it on and trying to deal with the housing is a great idea for the site, instead of just sitting there empty for years and years. Like, we had a lot of closed schools, so I commend the developer for trying to do something positive for Pontiac. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if no one else has anything they would like to say, I will close public comment. So what I'd like to do is I would like to ask our petitioner to reapproach the podium, please. And I will ask you the few questions that our residents had for you. The first question was, what will that property become?
Thanks, thanks for the question. Made me smile. We did talk about it last time, but now that I recall, we didn't really this time. So the school will be converted to 35 loft-style apartments, plus a small portion of, call it commercial, but nonprofit, local business tenants. You would know them if I said them, but I've talked to them, keeping it quiet for now. But that would be the kitchen. The boiler house is the detached little building behind the school. The gym would be kind of like a coffee shop, but, but not coffee. It would be the local food retailer who would be there. And the auditorium would be used for plays, rental, public space, that sort of thing. But the majority of the property would be loft-style apartments. And the goal is to keep the rents reasonable. So the first priority is current Pontiac residents. The second priority is current employees, future residents, Amazon, United Wholesale Mortgage, that sort of thing. So the ground-up Phase 2 part of the development is for, right now, we have the number at 145 loft apartment units. So that brings it to a total of 180 units plus four nonprofit local business spaces. And there's, you know, some side ideas too, would be basketball court. There already is one, but redoing that and moving it a little further east toward Astor Street. A small dog park for residents on that side of the property too. And a couple other ideas have been floated, but the bones of it is 180 units and four commercial.
Thank you. Excuse me, you can't, we've closed public comment. Thank you. Thank you for that information. The other question we had is to maintain green space at the property. Do you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, and that's actually been something we've been trying to do as well. Like, when I got those first drawings, my first thought was, we have, we have too much pavement. I mean, I have a few more sketches already drawn up where there's more grass, more parallel with, it kind of like a, the look we're going for is New York brownstone kind of style. There's some apartments in McComb Township I bumped into the other day that show it very well. I'm just trying to figure out how to hide the parking a little bit more than they did. You know, if you've seen some of those, there's one in Troy too. There's grass and sidewalk between two buildings, looks beautiful. And the next two, it's garages facing each other. So I'm, I'm trying to avoid that. I'm trying to make it as green as possible and still accommodate parking.
Great. That's good to hear. Thank you.
The, I think it's good to find out from the applicant what the intended use is, but tonight is just a rezoning. A future site plan would be required for any development. This is just a legal process to change the zoning map. And so, you know, Planning Commission and in the future, City Council should just consider the allowable uses for that zoning, the new proposed zoning district versus what is there now. And then, the only other thing they may consider is any conditions of approval that the applicant offers. But really, I think it's great, the intent here, but it's not binding, so.
Okay. Mike, do you have any questions?
I want to elaborate on that further for the neighbors. So if we're looking at this presently, to the north of, the top of the screen, that-
To the north of the image, the top of the screen, that's the existing former Longfellow Elementary School. The historic multi-story structure that's been vacant for at least a decade. And so, what the applicant is saying, that his intention, his development plan, is that its first phase is focusing on that existing structure, working within that existing structure. And then, to the bottom of the image, you could see his future phases. He's discussing building new construction of how many stories at this-
Right now, two.
Two stories or so. And so, it would be, he was talking about wanting to make sure that the parking lot is sort of screened or hidden. You'd be seeing those residential multi-story from MLK, that that would be facing MLK. But more broadly, what he's applied for, for this project, what he's applied for and considering tonight is rezoning. All the schools in Pontiac, you know, it's sort of back in the day, are R1, meaning, single-family households. Just like on Riverside Street, that would have R1 zoning for single-family houses. It's just a fluke of how it's categorized, that schools, no matter how big, no matter how big the parcel, that they are R1 as well. Some churches are R1 as well. But, so really, single-family homes, schools and churches, have I got that right? That's what that current zoning on all that land there allows. And he has applied to change that from R1, or residential 1, to R3, or residential 3. And if you want to, you can pull up the slide that shows the multiple uses that R3 allows. So it says that it's going to be residential, but it means it allows multifamily apartments. And sometimes, if he went and got a special exemption, exception that came through for public consideration, there could be some restaurants, some banks, or things like that. But it's geared towards mixed-use or higher-density residential development. So in an R1, what it is right now, he could not pursue his development. And no other potential user of the land could build multifamily apartments, because it's R1. Only thing that could happen on those parcels right now is single-family homes, schools, or churches. That's kind of it. So what he's asking is for us, the people of Pontiac, are we willing to say for these parcels, it should be R3? And that means, not just for him, whether he walks away today and never actually pursues any development, it's changing that, that to what is allowed, what we, the people, are allowing that land to be used for. Roger that. So, there are 11 parcels, is that what I heard? So we're talking about rezoning, not just one slice of land. It's a, it looks like one, just because it's sort of cohesive-ish. But, so there are, from back in the day, neighbors remember this, of course, but that East Boulevard, originally now Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, had a lot of dense houses, all fronting on MLK. And then, about 23 years ago, they expanded and repaved the road. And when they did that, they bought up all the homes on the east side of the road. Might not be the case right there, but you can see, that's what those parcel lines are showing. There used to be, if there weren't single-family homes, they were, it was designated or planned that there would be single-family homes there. When they expanded the road, they demolished a lot of that. So now, it's, when you're driving north on MLK and you look to the right, all you see is sort of a lot of land with the closed school in the distance. So he's proposing, and he's requesting our consideration, that we do the big chunk of land that the school has always sat on, and then those smaller parcels as well, that presumably, from what I remember when I was a kid, that there used to be a lot of houses there. But up and down MLK, that was the case. So that's why it's kind of unique that there's all those smaller parcels.
And Chairman, Commissioner McGinnis, if I could add to that, the three parcels that are not, that are vacant along MLK that are not part of this rezoning, those are actually zoned C1, which is local business. So right now, there's no business there, but you could see, it's, it's a, something that is more retail-driven, that people could walk to from the neighborhood, could already go there under the current zoning district. So this, it would, this R3, if it were approved, would complement that C1 zoning district for that corner property, or properties.
Probably back in the day, there was a corner store, some commercial activity at East Boulevard and that residential side street.
I believe it was a gas station way back in the 50s, according to environmental.
Gas station, says the residents and the applicant.
I think it's probably worth mentioning too, with, so the Longfellow parcel plus those, it's a total of 10, 10 parcels.
I just want to make sure I had that right, that we were talking about, although it's one footprint, and it seems like one complex, we, we would be taking action on multiple parcels for that rezoning. Okay? I think that, I think I have a full understanding. I just want the community to know that he's got a specific plan and a specific use, and that's what's prompting him to want to rezone it. But we, the people, would be rezoning it for multiple potential uses until we, as the people, decide to change it. So, but it sort of is, it, it won't have to come back again for a new rezoning if there's a new proposal or new housing that happens. To the, to the staff, R3 does allow though, if somebody wanted to develop this in the future into other single-family homes, does R3 allow single-family homes? Do you have it?
You're up, you're good.
Yes. The answer is yes. You can have single-family homes in R3.
So for the residents' benefit, it doesn't mean that it can't still have that lighter or lower use. A church or a school could still go there, but it basically takes it to the next level of what residential zoning allows. Nothing further, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Shepherd?
I always like following Mike.
I know.
Makes it much easier. How many acres is it again?
The main parcel's 6.6. The stripped-down MLK is 1.55. So a total of about eight, minus those bottom three.
I mean, we all know we have a demand for housing right now, so there's a shortage. I think as far as the city goes, it's also increasing the tax base significantly. I don't know what the taxes are on it now, but it's pretty low. So, I mean, what that does is, is huge. I mean, whatever development goes on there, there may be tax breaks. That's not really necessarily part of the discussion, but it is a nice thing. So I think there's definitely use for single, or multifamily. That's all I have.
Thank you. Sue?
I appreciate your presentation last time in May. And I guess I'm a little hesitant, only because the rezoning stays with the property. I don't have a problem with what you've presented, but if it's sold- I don't have a problem with what you've presented, but if it's sold, it still remains R3. It's definitely, your proposal, this is kind of going into the site plan, but I just want to make sure that when you're looking at this and you're developing your plans, that you're very ambitious, and I appreciate that. You're going to need quite a bit of parking for your community spaces and things like that, and you're utilizing the north entrance off of Northway. And if you go to that parcel and you exit and enter, you're adding 180 units of people entering and exiting 24/7, and you've got a house right across the street. So just for future thought, I would maybe try and look at your egress to and from the site. But that's my only comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. I don't have any comments, actually. So, again, thank you for bringing this proposal to us for consideration. Would someone like to make a motion?
I make a motion to recommend, recommend approving...
Can we get you closer to the mic?
Yep. I make a motion to recommend approving the, or the approval of the proposed rezoning from R1 family dwelling to R3 multiple-family dwellings at 31 North Aster, with the conditions as prevented, presented by the applicant.
The applicant, oh, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Applicant did not provide conditions.
The applicant did not provide, so we just take that out of the motion. Correct? Do you want me to read it again?
I think, I think you're okay.
Yeah, you're fine.
Yeah.
Any support? Thank you. Roll call, please.
McGinnis? Yes, to approve. Parlove?
Yes, to approve.
Shepherd?
Yes, to approve.
Sinclair?
Yes, to approve.
Congratulations. Moving forward.
I just want to let the community know, so this planning commission makes a recommendation. So this now is recommended to the city council. They make the ultimate vote on if something will be rezoned. So it's not done, done. It's just, it's cleared this step, and next it'll go to city council for further consideration. But even still, that's just the rezoning. He'd still have to go through site plan approval and other stuff for the actual project. So you'll continue to receive communications, and as your city council person, I'm happy to field inquiries or if you see something happening, you want to know more. Thank you very much for making the time to come out.
Thank you. We are going to take a five-minute break, and we will re-adjourn at 7:16. Thank you.
Sue, you want to give me to the side now?
Oh, sure.
So you should see, I dropped the, so I dropped the thing, and the battery just goes, like, fly. And then I couldn't open the PowerPoint. There's a mode on there. It's not presenter mode like that, but there's a mode that they specifically have with the projector, and it got caught in that. So we'll talk to Phil and just learn about that as we go forward, so.
I'm really surprised by that last one.
Or more people, yeah.
Hey, Nicola, give us a call tomorrow. We'll kind of set the groundwork to go forward and start to schedule the city council. Okay, that sounds good. What's funny is I got done early. Those meetings are coming up.
Oh, that was my bad.
Well, I think Carla's going to have to, as far as she loses all the time, you know. We're also going to set up, I think we're going to have a regular meeting, specifically with planning commission, to review it afterwards, where we get to, Carla, who's working this, you know. You know, the paper copies, the digital copies, you know. I think her is just going to have to help us. Okay. Hi. Some of them, we know, are beyond repair, but this one, they're hoping. Did you guys come for a specific case this evening, or did you just want to see planning commission? Oh, okay, okay, yeah. What street do you live on? Okay. So the next planning commission meeting is July 5th, and there's going to be an attempt to get them on for that meeting. So there'll be another public hearing notice. You'll get another mailing to know that it's coming up. You're done for today.
Yep. Just wave at me if I'm going too fast.
You're welcome.
Sorry, you're at the end again. No.
We talked about that long enough last night, so don't remind me.
Did the chicken people show up, like, the public? So those people, they didn't show up?
None of them. But they did, they did go from nine to six on the total number of numbers. So at least they kept it at a, you know, Tim Shepherd would be okay with the number. Completely opposite, like, no one that showed up, that planning commission showed up to the city council. No one that has been, a lot of speakers at city council last week, none of them like planning commission, so. I've never been down there. Hopefully, it's up there.
What?
Oh, no, I didn't know.
Oh, we were just talking about.
Normally, or just today?
No, it's fine.
So just the, you get that, Corey?
What?
I think with what's up there, just deal with the... There's a couple things.
Oh, no, I'm fine. I'm fine. I'm ready.
That's the hard part. Okay. Good luck tomorrow. We have two more items.
There's two more items?
Yep. The marijuana? Yeah. I don't know the date of the vote, but it's... I think a few people had to go to the bathroom, so we're about to get started. We only have two items left, so. I'll see you on Monday then.
Thank you.
We have to step back, and then we don't have a break. Or then we don't have a break.
That's okay.
Are you telling your plus-one to get on the road?
Yeah. Hopefully, he's been on the road for a while. I told him to be here at 7:30.
Does he still haven't traveled much before work?
No. No, that's like, two times a year. He has to go to disc golf tournaments.
One of my buddies had, the buddy's dad founded Anova, and he just started working. I, you know, he went to Hollywood, became an actor, all that kind of stuff. A few awards. It's not major awards, but, you know. Working for his dad's company. Is it disc craft? Who's he working for?
So he works for MVP.
What's it called?
MVP. M...
I've heard of it, you know.
I don't know anything about, I'm not into disc golf.
Cody works for Anova.
Okay.
I play, but I'm not an expert in all.
I can kind of aim. That's about it.
Okay, we are back. Thank you for your patience. Now, we are going to go to our last public hearing for the evening. This is application SEP 23006. It is a special exception permit for 45258 Woodward Avenue for Medical Marijuana Provisioning Center.
All right, so this is an application for a medical marijuana provisioning center. It's in a C3 zone district in the non-overlay district, which is why it requires a special exception through you guys. So in this case, the applicant is proposing to demolish the existing one-story structure on site and replace it with a new building located further north on the property, and with a larger footprint at 2,350 square feet. Parking will be provided on both sides and to the rear of the structure. So this gives you an idea of where it's located. It's on Woodward, on the east side, north of South Boulevard. It's adjacent to industrial zoning, but it's right there in that little corner between Woodward and the railway of C3, that kind of C3 zoning block. That's where they're located. And then, this is the site as it looks currently. This is an aerial. It shows the existing restaurant structure that's not being used, and then the parking lot wrapped around it. So the applicant is proposing a very similar layout, just things are moved slightly. These are photos I took of current conditions, showing the structure, the parking lot, which is still in fairly good condition. And then, here is the site plan that is being proposed. So as you can see, there's two access points off Woodward. There's parking wrapped all the way around, and then the 2,300-square-foot structure here with the entrances on the side. And then, parking spaces are, I believe, 18 by 20, with a two-foot overhang in the landscaped area. So here's a rendering of what the structure will look like once complete. They're proposing metal siding, asphalt shingles, painted fascia, painted black and blue. And then, this is the only major change from what was presented at the informational session last month, but the applicant has adjusted the facade to have the required transparency. And then, I won't jump into the analysis. It's quite lengthy, and you got this all in your staff report. But I basically go through each chapter of the zoning ordinance, parking, landscaping, frontage design, lighting, low-impact and performance standards, and found that they are in compliance with all of our requirements as of now. And so with that, our staff recommendation is, we are recommending approval. And the sample motion is to make a motion to approve the site plans as presented for a medical marijuana facility at 45258 Woodward Avenue with no conditions.
Very good. Thank you, Corey. Could we get our petitioner to approach the podium? State your name and address for the record, please, and let us know if you'd like to add anything to the presentation.
That would be the correct button, yes? Excellent. Quick learner. Christopher Enright, 628 East Parent, Royal Oak, Michigan, 48067. Don't have really much else to add to the special use or the site plan aspect. We think we're good fit for the location, and we're anxious to be here.
Very good. Thank you very much. I will start with Mr. McGinnis. Do you have any questions?
No, not at this time. I appreciate that essentially this has, you know, been before us previously, so we're well acquainted.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Shepherd?
I don't have any questions. I like what they have.
Very good. Thank you. Sue? Nor do I. So what I'm going to do is, I'm going to open public comment, since this is public hearing. If anyone has any comments they would like to make, you have three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Carlton Jones, 1323 Oakline Drive, Pontiac, Michigan.
Carlton Jones, 1323 Oakline Drive, Pontiac, Michigan. I think we have been, you know, have to have to some degree be commendable to those folks who came to our community and wanted to do something good for Pontiac. I spent a long time waiting. I commend a minimum those who are now stepping forward and trying to do what they can to still fulfill the obligations of a medical facility. And as we all know about this industry, it's very tense and tight. But for those who come to our community and willing to step forward, I commend that. And I think working along with the partner they have, the ELMs, is an excellent opportunity for us to be able to see how we can do something for Pontiac. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, no one else is coming to the podium. I'm going to close public hearing.
Chair, can I just summarize one point from Cory's presentation? One of the things with the special exception is this, which is different than some of the other special exceptions you've seen for medical marijuana facilities, is not adjacent to residential property and really is surrounded by the railroad and industrial properties. So really this kind of is a little bit different of why it fits into the character of the zoning district of the neighborhood and does not require any conditions of approval or additional consideration for this permit, so.
Thank you for that additional information. Mr. McGinnis, do you have anything else?
I have nothing further.
Thank you. Mr. Shepherd?
No, no comments?
No. Ms. Sinclair?
Nor do I. So we are ready for a motion.
I make a motion to approve the site plans as presented for a medical marijuana facility at 45258 Woodward Avenue with no conditions.
Thank you. Any support?
Support.
Excellent. Roll call, please.
McGinnis?
Yes, to approve.
Sinclair?
Yes, to approve.
Parlov?
Yes, to approve.
Shepherd?
Yes, to approve.
Four, nothing.
Excellent. Now what I would like to do is I would like to ask the petitioner for SPR 23-010, which is the site plan review for 45258 Woodward Avenue, the same location. To stand by. We're going to have a presentation by staff.
All right, so there's not much new information for the site plan. So again, this is the applicant, C3 zoning, and then a brief description of what they're proposing, a 2,300 square foot structure with parking wrapped around. Again, here's the location off of Woodward, north of South Boulevard. The zoning, again, as Mark stated, there's no adjacent residential. It's all industrial or railway or Woodward. And as you can see from the rear of the property, you can't even see the nearest residential. There's industrial in the, in between. Here's the site plan that they're proposing. Again, oops. Two access points. Parking is all the way around on all sides. There's handicap parking located right here. I didn't provide the landscaping plan. However, they meet all the requirements and they're providing enough trees at all the various spaces in the parking lot and along the frontage. And then this structure that they're proposing is a new build, so they will be tearing down what is currently there and replacing it with an entirely new structure. Again, metal siding, asphalt, and then black and blue fascia, and then the transparency requirement has been met. There are, I believe, four standards for approval when it comes to site plans. Standard one, staff found that according to the most recent master plan, the subject site is located in a district that is intended for commercial and light industrial uses. Further, the master plan encourages the development of underutilized parcels. Standard two, staff found that the Woodward corridor is mostly zone C3 because it is intended for higher intensity commercial uses that generate traffic and require easy access to transportation. The proposed use suits the character of the C3 district. Standard three, the proposed use does not pose a risk to other development in the surrounding neighborhood and the proposed use is consistent with the high intensity commercial activity already found. Standard four, typically the activation of a vacant and previously developed site presents an opportunity for improvement. The proposed use is essentially a retail commercial operation, similar to many others on the Woodward corridor, and there is no reason to believe approval of this marijuana facility will be hazardous or disturbing to the existing or future uses in the area. And with that, staff is recommending approval with no conditions. And our sample motion reads, I make a motion to approve the spec, oops, the site plan for a medical marijuana facility at 45258 Woodward Avenue with no conditions.
Thank you very much. If the petitioner would like to approach the podium, please state your name and address for the record again.
Chris, excuse me. Christopher Enright, architect, 628 East Parent Street Avenue, sorry, Royal Oak, Michigan, 48067.
Thank you. Do you need to add anything more to our presentation this evening?
I do not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh huh. Mr. McGinnis, any questions, thoughts?
Nothing further.
Okay. Mr. Shepherd?
Well done. The building looks great. Just a quick question, if you don't mind. When do you, when would you start? When will you tear it down?
Can you go back to the podium, please? Thank you.
We want to start as soon as possible, whenever that is.
As soon as your approvals are done, you'll?
We have to turn, well, there'll be construction drawings and permits and things of that nature, but yeah, that'll be the next step for us.
Look forward to it. It's a great looking building. Nice job.
Pardon me?
Great looking building.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Ms. Sinclair?
I apologize if I haven't seen your previous presentations to the planning commission, as this is only my second meeting. I do have two questions. One, your general site plan says the existing pylon sign is to remain.
No. No, we're going to, we're going to, we're planning on a new sign on our, on our site. We're not keeping that outside.
Okay. It looks awfully close to the driveway approach. I'm sure it's within the 10 by 10 triangle that's there. But do you have a north elevation by any chance? Do we have that in the slide presentation?
No. The only elevations I have is the rendering that was provided.
I, I have one, if you want to see it.
Could you just clarify on the north elevation, is the metal siding horizontal?
Correct.
For me, that's a big issue because it, it reminds me of rolling doors where something's not safe. We want to, you know, pull it down. It gives an impression that the area is not safe. Much rather see it in a vertical application than horizontal, but those are really my only comments.
Yeah, it's a standard product that we use on all of our facilities. I know that. It's a, it's a, again, it's, it's standard for, for our operations and it's been fairly successful, so.
Do you always use it in horizontal application?
Yes. Mm-hmm. Yes, we do.
Because the, the north side elevation of the building, you really don't have any windows there, correct?
That's correct. That's correct. Right. We could paint it a different color. I mean, I don't know if the gray is any better, the darker, the blue is maybe less noticeable.
Plant said sandstone.
It's a grayish sort of, it's a, yeah, corrugated sandstone, which is actually, it ends up being, it's like a grayish color.
Okay. That's, that's all my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no comments, so I am ready for a motion.
I make a motion.
Yes, please.
I make a motion to approve the site plan for a medical marijuana facility at 45258 Woodward Avenue with no conditions.
Thank you. Any support?
Support.
All right, roll call, please.
Shepherd?
Yes, to approve.
Parlov?
Yes, to approve.
McGinnis?
Yes, to approve.
Sinclair?
Yes, to approve.
All right.
Congratulations. You're welcome.
If the applicant can give us a call this week, we can get you started on the next step, which is the final site plan.
So this, there's a final site plan?
Yep. We can work through that. It's rather procedural, but we can work through that with the departments. We need to.
Is it a public hearing or is it?
It is not, so it is a staff approval. Yep.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience, too. Okay, now we are going to go to public comment. I would like to open that up. If anyone has anything they would like to say, please approach the podium. Name and address for the record. Nothing? All right.
I've got something for you.
Well, public comment from the gallery is not happening, but we can take one from Mr. McGinnis.
I just want to provide an update to this planning commission that we received word that Hazel Cad, who previously was a planning commissioner, she has passed away.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So we salute her service to the community through the Pontiac Planning Commission and the city council will be passing a resolution celebrating her service. She also, for a short time, was on the Pontiac School Board as well. So we remember the service and commitment to the city of Pontiac of Ms. Hazel Cad. I also wanted to share that the city council has taken up a few of the recommendations of the planning commission. The one most primarily, they separated the question of unlicensed residential facilities and homes, so that's still under deliberation. But last night voted when it came to household pets, poultry, livestock. And so it was adopted. The only deviation or change from what was the planning commission recommendation is that it made the number of chickens three instead of six. So egg-laying chickens, it's the limit for Pontiac will be three per household. And that instead of nine as the cap for household pets overall, it's six. It was brought down to six. So the same three per species, that increase was still kept, but down to six. Everything else that was part of the public hearing and other discussion, that did pass as well. So rooster ban and regulation and inspection of coops and ensuring uniformity from the zoning and the municipal code so that no livestock is permitted, that happened as well. And then, this is a more code enforcement matter, but in that municipal code, it also regulated in terms of the tethering of dogs, the length of time in which a dog could be tethered, the collar, just for more humane treatment of dogs and respect of neighbors. And did I miss something that the council?
We passed the stormwater ordinances as well, and then, no, that's it.
So obviously many more still to come, and you generated a few more tonight, so I'll report back at future months in terms of sort of the finish, the culmination of the work that you helped advance. I just want to give you that status update.
Thank you. Anything from you, Tim?
No, but what, I don't know if we really got the answer to why three instead of six. What was the reasoning for that? Chickens?
Oh, in terms of, there were many residents that came out and spoke that wanted none. And so it was, it was just sort of, it was a close vote. It was four to three on that particular amendment. But, so the majority had it and that was bringing it down to three instead of six.
And you had another question about?
Bonding. Do you want to bring that up now?
Yeah, and I think one of the things we're going to be evaluating later this year with our zoning code is what bonds are being done within the zoning framework and then also learning about what is done within any engineering and, and a building framework to begin with. I'm not sure that the city has the proper bonding from the experiences that I have as a planner, and I think we have some opportunities to ensure that projects get completed in a timely manner. But there will be some community conversations about, you know, what to do to protect the city, especially when there's public infrastructure involved. And sometimes it, landscape bonds sometimes are helpful, that the project truly gets finished out, so. We don't have a lot at the moment, but we're going to ensure that we look at other communities in Oakland County and the region and we do what's best for the city of Pontiac in the long term.
Yeah, I don't have, I don't think it has to be huge. It's just something that lets us follow up. Like, you know, if you're bringing this great rendering, great plan, great, you know, and then it turns into something else. How do we enforce? Because it's already done. Right, so, you know, what do you say at that point? So yeah, I appreciate that. I don't think it needs to be something ridiculous that's prohibitive.
Yep.
I apologize. I did forget to provide an update. The planning commission recommended the vacating of an alleyway or a right-of-way off of Baldwin, and that ultimately was approved by the city council as well.
Yep, forgot that one. And the UWM Bradford vacation has not gone to city council. There are still some legal proceedings happening in the background. We hope to take that forward as soon as possible, possibly in July.
Sue, anything you wanted to mention? Okay. All right, I want to say thank you. Thank you, thank you for the resurfacing of our city hall parking lot and the striping. Oh, my gosh.
That's awesome.
I'm so happy. I could see where I could park my car. And I didn't have to go down a hole to get there. So thank you, whoever was responsible for that.
You, the taxpayer, you're responsible for it. But yes, it was long overdue.
Oh, my goodness.
I'll share that feedback. Public works worked hard to make that happen. There had to be, there was a lot of deteriorated curb at work that they had to do as well.
It's beautiful.
I saw that, of course, 144 East Pike Street shares this parking lot or, you know, is adjacent to it. So the application requested a hold until the July meeting. What is the proposed zoning map change for the credit union that's just here?
They're requesting, so currently it's Civic Center, is that correct?
Yeah, it's this weird zoning district exclusively for city hall and they got grouped in with it.
City hall and schools and, you know, all kind of government organizations.
Just city hall.
It is just city hall?
Just city hall.
No.
And I think it's just a nuance that when it was first created, it was for the city employees. It was the municipal credit union. So it was part of the Civic Center in that way, but so it's, they want to have a commercial use, is that?
I'm not sure exactly what use they're proposing, but yes, they want to sell. They don't want, it's not going to be a credit union anymore. They want to sell, I think, to just another bank, a credit union. Good to know. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to close public comment. And the last thing is staff communications.
So the next meeting is July 5th. We are expected to have 144 Pike there. We hope to have the vacation of Hovey come back. We have a couple items that we hope to move forward. We're just not sure if they'll make a July meeting or August or September, but it does look like at least in the next month or two that there might be a slowdown in planning commission. We may not be having eight, nine item agendas, so. Thank you for the last six months because it's been a wild ride, but we're still alive, so.
Well, thank you. We wouldn't be here if it weren't for you.
And the last thing I just wanted to mention, not a specific update, is I'm really starting to have conversations Friday with partners to really do the setup work for the master plan. So I don't have any updates at the moment. My goal, I would like to take to the city council subcommittee in July is really the framework for a proposal, but we will share with planning commission when there are pertinent updates, you know, as we move forward over the next several months.
Excellent. And it looks like we are ready for adjournment.
So moved.
Support?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Everyone have a nice Fourth of July holiday. Stay safe.
I don't need my dinner. That was if we were going to be here till 10 in the morning, 10 at night, so.